Good afternoon and welcome to today's work session. This Tuesday, June 28th. I'm grateful today that we have so many of you who are here as we have a significant item before us, which is to receive a presentation regarding our 2324 biennial budget. With that, Bill, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. This is our pleasure to present the proposed 2324 budget summary. And I just want to thank you all, starting with the Chair and all of the Commissioners and the County Manager, for your time and effort into this process that began back in September. I know you've had several hours of meetings. County Manager, thank you for sitting through all of our meetings as well. That was a lot, lot to ask, a lot happening between September and today. And then I'm going to kick it back to you, Chairwoman, to let you kind of go over the first couple of slides.
Yes, thank you. First, I want to commend you, Bill, and Buddy and your staff for working with all of us to get us here today. I know there's been a lot of meetings with our Commissioners, our County Manager, our Constitutional Officers and staff. And the culmination of that is before us. But it didn't just start with those meetings. I will say that this effort really started at the top of last year during the retreat that the Board had in January of 2021 where staff had what you would call a candid conversation with us to let us know about needs within their departments, whether it was by way of staffing or in service levels. And this Board was particularly sensitive to that. However, being at the height of a pandemic last year and there just being a lot of unknowns, we were new to our Board. We took our time to try to understand where we were from an organizational perspective. We took time to make sure that we heard from each of our departments. And we had a series of meetings that took place in the fall of last year. Took that into consideration. Also had to take into consideration the general economic climate with respect to the pandemic. And we're fortunate to be in a position this year to respond. But as that time has lapsed, there have been some other nuances that have crept up, and they stem around workforce. And I know a lot of our departments have been down, you know, somewhere near 30% for a lot of our departments. And it has truly impacted our operations. I think it stressed the level of morale that really had already been stressed within our organization. And this is an opportunity for us to get some of those things right and to make sure that we can continue to keep our county running so that we can provide top level of service to our constituents who deserve that. So with that, the key interest of today's budget pertains to employee recruitment and retention in response to hearing the issues, again, and share with us during our retreat. And just some things that some of us already knew, like myself, that we have not always been providing, annual merit increases to our employees. We invested in providing a pay study to get our employee salaries to market rate level. And we are prioritizing that in this year's budget. In order to also not only attract but retain our current employees, we have proposed in this budget a reduction of our vesting period from 10 years to five years, which keeps us competitive to both our private and public markets. Also, we're sharing a rising increased cost of healthcare that all of us are experiencing. Our budget reflects us taking some of the burden off of our employees with respect to them. For another year, and I'm pleased to say for two years in a row, which is a shame to have to tout because this should be something that is a regular part of how we conduct business. But I'm very pleased to say that we are budgeting for another annual merit increase for our employees. And I'm hoping that that's something that they can come to expect and rely on so that they can be recognized for their contributions to making Cobb County Government the best that it could be. Last year, this Board implemented step and grade. And I'm also pleased to share that this budget presents a continuation of step and grade for our sworn officer positions in the county. And their year's budget also will provide opportunity for us to address some of the issues of compression. Now, it's certainly important for us to recruit and retain positions, but our staff has recognized the need for additional positions to address desired service levels within the organization. When we heard from our staff last year, there was a request of about 650 positions. Over time, that has been whittled away to now have a proposed number of 147 positions. And these positions address a lot of the issues that we've heard shared from constituents through day-to-day correspondence and also during cityhood discussions. I'm not going to read off all of them, but some of them do include maintenance of our right-of-way. The way that we maintain our roadways signals who we are as a county. And we know that we have opportunity to do a better job in light of the levels of debris that are on our roadways and also to address mowing of our right-of-ways. We also are addressing code enforcement as, again, the presentation of our community speaks volumes. And we want to make sure that we are being diligent in addressing code enforcement issues that are seen by our residents but also by our visitors. We also are addressing something that came out of our cityhood discussions, was to provide a sense of place in different communities. And all four of the efforts had included expansion or the inclusion of a Parks Department. And I heard in multiple discussions that the desire was to have events and programming that created a sense of place. And so in this budget, we're including some positions to help parks and recreation with that. And hopefully, that will help to show those that were active in the cityhood movements that we were listening and that we want to be responsive to the needs that they have shared. There are other positions that are being honored to help us run better as a county. Again, I can't read all of them, but I include internal audit. They're the ones that really help to make sure that we are addressing any risks to our organization and are being thoughtful in our operations and governance. And we're adding additional positions to help buoy that department. Again, there are other departments as well, including for our DA's office, our Sheriff's Office, and others. With that, while we are addressing workforce and new positions, I know there's a concern about adding new positions when we have so many vacancies. And it has been articulated and our County Manager has supported that when these positions are created in our budget, that departments will be asked to fill their vacancies first before hiring new positions. And that will help to ensure that we are not creating a gaping hole within our organization, but we're addressing the areas that we're hemorrhaging in right now and then augmenting that with new positions. Workforce development, again, is a main priority for us, but also not just maintaining our human assets, but our capital assets are important for us to be good stewards. And we are increasing our commitment to our annual capital budget. And that will allow us to better maintain our facilities and more reliably do it without having to depend on SPOLOs to replace things that should have been maintained through a regular budget. And that will also, I believe, address vehicle replacement. Finally, we are increasing funding to two of our state organizations that work closely with the county, our Cobb Douglas Board of Health and also our DFACS. And they have addressed that even though their state departments being in Cobb that has a higher cost of living has made it more of a challenge for them to be able to attract and retain staff. And I know that the investment that we're going to make is going to help them be able to help Cobb residents stay healthy and to address critical needs when it comes to families in our county. Some other things that are not shared here that I know our budget is addressing is the disparity study. We've heard from different businesses about how Cobb has better opportunity to engage our women-owned businesses, our minority-owned businesses, and our disabled veteran businesses. But we cannot set a target for that without having a disparity study done, which is a technical analysis of our opportunity that will provide what the proportion of those businesses are to all of our businesses here and help us set goals when it comes to purchasing and contracts. So I'm pleased that that's going to be presented in this budget. Also tied in here, which I don't have listed, but it goes back to workforce, is considering the competitive nature of the work environment and driving around town and seeing, you know, fast food restaurants and other retail services providing entry-level pay of $15 an hour. Propose that we do have an entry-level starting salary of $17 an hour so that we can be more competitive and attractive for those who are committed to serving our public. And, you know, to hear about some of the positions that some of our employees are leaving to, to be able to keep food on their table, has been disheartening, knowing the objectives that we have as a Board and that we have as an organization in being able to provide a top rate of service because we're a top-rated county. And so I believe that that entry-level wage will allow us to be able to attract residents to help us keep up with our motto, which is expect the best. I can go to the next slide. So as I shared, we've had a series of budget presentations at work sessions for several months. And I want to thank all of our staff who are here today, who are part of those discussions, that were open and honest about things that were going on within your agencies and departments. While we couldn't address all of the needs that were presented, as shown here, 32 of 42 departments will have some of their requests met through this budget. The public can see these presentations on our county website. And we've also had those presentations broadcasted publicly during our work sessions. A copy of this budget presentation actually today will also be on our website. I want to thank our Commissioners who've had a series of meetings with staff along the way to share what their interests and concerns are. And we'll have opportunity to also share that. And we'll also have public meetings for the public to share with us their perspective about our budget and for that to be taken into consideration before it's finally adopted on July 26th. As part of today's hearing, we will have an advertisement in the Marietta Daily Journal in a couple of days. And our first public hearing for the, those that want to weigh in will be July 12th at 9:00 a.m. I believe that coincides with the BOC meeting, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So I don't know if we have any members of the public here today. There is not opportunity during our work session to provide feedback to Commissioners, but you will have that opportunity on July 12th to do so in this room. But you always have opportunity in emailing all of the Commissioners and letting us know your thoughts. I've been getting some already, and I'm sure some of our Commissioners have as well. But I want to thank everyone for making this a transparent process, for making this an inclusive process, and for making this one of the most comprehensive budgeting processes that I've seen so that we can begin to truly address not only our needs but our opportunities in the county. I'll turn things back over to you, Bill.
Thank you, Chairwoman. We're going to show you the 23 proposed budget in a variety of different ways. The first slide I have for you today is just to kind of show you an overall picture of what you heard through the presentations from September to February and then where we are today. So this is the different fund types. We have governmental funds, business types, and then the total operating funds. So as the Chairwoman mentioned, the overall position requests were 658 that you heard during those presentations. Through various meetings, we were able to reduce that down to 147 key and critical positions. And I just want to show you kind of some of the differences. So the 23 requested for the governmental fund types was $927 million. We're proposing $865 million. But please, just as a point of note, the $927 does not include class and pay. So that was when we had all those conversations, all those presentations. We hadn't completed the class and pay study. So we are below what was being asked even net of class and pay. So that is just a, just a point to call out to your attention there. Business types, again, they're very close. Primarily, this is our water fund, and we have a few others we'll get to in a minute. But just to kind of give you an overall look, and then just as a comparison from the 2022 adopted, we were over $1 billion in 2022. We're looking at close to $1.2, $1.15 billion in 2023 as being proposed. Okay, so this is a high-level version, and we're going to touch on a few of these key funds. And then we do have some individual slides as we walk forward. So this is the governmental funds, all listed here, the total of the 98 million increase and the 865 million in total for the proposed. And I have these listed in descending order as far as the increase versus the biggest increase at the top to the lowest at the very bottom. One of the things that I want to call out to your attention is in 2022, we basically said we were not going to go up in the budget. It was a very minimum increase. We projected no digest growth in 2022 because of the pandemic. So that $67.5 million that you see there is really the combination of two years of growth, 2022 as well as a projected 2023. So we can kind of walk through that a little bit on the general fund specifically as we move down. The other one, the next one down is the claims fund. And this is one that we overlook a lot of times and don't have a lot of conversations in and around. This is our healthcare fund as well as our claims and liability fund and workers' comp fund. You'll see that is up $12.4 million. Obviously, the pandemic had an impact on the county's healthcare claims. The healthcare claims alone are projected to go up $8 million in 2023. And then, and the other big part of that is the insurance that the county buys. Although we are self-insured, we do buy several insurance policies throughout the county, general liability, cyber, and a very, several other ones that we approved earlier this year. The, the nationwide market for insurance has grown dramatically in the last couple of years, cyber being a big piece of that. Excess liability coverage is another piece. So that is a $3 million increase in 2023 for the, just the insurance policies and the claim losses on claims that we've had so far this year and projecting what that looks like in 2023. So just want to note, of the $12 million, $8 million is healthcare. $3 million is insurance policy and claims. So that's not one that we usually spend a lot of time on, but those are worth noting because it is a very big number. Okay. As we walk down this list, I do have individual slides for the general fund, the fire fund, and the E911 fund, so I won't spend a lot of time on those, on this slide. But I want to jump down to the hotel motel fund. This is a very, very big increase, but this is all revenue-driven. So you can see we're budgeting $16.5 million in 2023. This is recovering from the pandemic. So just to kind of give you an idea, in 2019, we collected $17.6 million. So we are steadily improving. We're not quite there yet. We hope in 2023 we will be, but we take a conservative approach in what this number looks like. So that increase is simply a revenue-driven increase. And the same with the CSSD1 fund. This is our $3 room night fund. This is, again, revenue-driven, so we are seeing the recovery there. And the CSSD2 fund is the property tax component of the special service district. So again, revenue-driven. The millage rate has been stable for years, and this is used to help fund the stadium debt service, which we also have a slide on in a little while. And the Six Flags Special Service District, again, is revenue-driven. It's based on the service district and the millage associated with that service district. And they can only be used within that district itself. And then as you walk down the rest of these, they're very minimum increases. Parking deck has a slight increase. CSBG, CSBG, no increase. Debt service fund, no increase. Law library, no increase. And streetlight district actually has a slight decrease. But I do want to point out, since we're on this debt service slide, I want to note that it's $4.8 million, and that is simply our debt service on our parks bonds. The last payment of that will take place in 2023, January 1, 2023. Our parks bond will be paid off. We are not proposing a millage rate associated with the debt service fund as part of the 2023 budget because we have collected enough money to make that final payment, and we'll be using the cash that we have on hand to do so. All right, I'm going to jump into the business-type funds real quick. Water being our biggest one here, coming in, it's $257 million. It's a $16.8 million increase. And I wanted to let you know, as we look at that, $13 million of that is operations. And it's not for new and improved programs. It's for increased costs related to sludge, chemical, storage tank maintenance and repairs, as well as depreciation. So of the $16 million, $13 million of that is existing operating costs that have simply increased over a period of time. And then you, then we do have some additional positions. We have five positions being proposed for the, the water fund, but that has a small impact. But they do share in the non-controlled things such as increases in healthcare, increases in pension. So those are also factoring in as we move forward. The transit fund is relatively flat. Golf courses is as well, and the sustainability, waste, and beautification is flat as well. But just to give you an idea, transit is being proposed at one additional position, and sustainability, waste, and beautification has one additional position for 2023. All right, so we have the very specific detailed funds here. So we talked about the 650-plus positions that were being requested. General fund was 515 of those positions as far as requested. And we talk about the 147 that you talked about in the first couple of slides. There's 148 and a half position proposals. So I'm going to explain what that means, and I'll give you a little bit of a breakdown. So when we say 147 positions, that's full-time positions. So you'll notice the general fund has 124 and a half of those. The reason there's a half of those is one of those positions is shared, is funded 50% by fire, 50% by general fund. So that's why when I get to the fire slide, you'll see a half there as well. But that's how that comes to, comes into play. Nine part-time positions and then 15 reclassifications. So starting at the top here, we have the personnel increase. So we're seeing, going from $328 million to $370 million. That, again, includes all of the new positions, all the reclassifications, the part-time positions, class and pay, merit, step and grade, compression, healthcare, pension. That is all factored into that number. So we kind of, as we walk through that, it's, it's a very big chunk of the overall budget, but that's what we do. We're a service industry. We don't make things. We provide service, so it makes sense that personnel is the vast majority of our overall budgets. And capital is mainly covered through our SPOLOs component. So that's why when we look at these, it is, it is a big-ticket line item. But it makes sense when you stop and think about it. Police doesn't make things, they provide service. Parks doesn't make things, they provide service, and so on. All right, and I'm going to move down to the operating line. So we do have another pretty good increase here from $92 million to $106 million. And that there's, this is really being driven by two major lines. We talked about the increase to the funding of the claims fund. Each fund pays into that fund. That is our, the fund that we pay for insurance and claims liability. Every fund that has a loss pays into that. So we share the insurance cost between the general fund, the fire fund, the water fund, and so on. And it's based on how the claims come in for the history. Meaning if, for example, general fund carries the lion's share of those claims, general fund will carry the lion's share of that funding. So with that being said, the general fund component to fund the claims fund went up $4.6 million. So we talked about that overall increase. $4.6 million of that is coming straight from the general fund. And then the second biggest line that affects our operating is our inmate medical. Again, tied to healthcare costs. So that's up $3.5 million. Those are the two primary drivers of that. But please keep in mind with the positions that we've added, full-time positions, you have any operating costs associated with those positions as well as capital that are also going to be included in this budget. So for example, if we're adding an employee who requires a computer, a desk, a workstation, that's an operating impact. An employee that requires a truck or a vehicle, that's a capital impact. So all of those, any operating and capital requests associated with those 124 and a half positions are included in this in operating capital as well. All right, moving down. This is probably, for me personally, this is one of the things I'm the most proud of, of this budget. This has been a struggle for the county since I started here, since the recession and before funding of our capital. This is not new shiny items. This is repair and maintenance of existing facilities. I know Commissioner Gambrell, we've had conversations about this for the last couple of years about trying to increase that undesigned capital contingency. I know several of you on the Board have expressed this as a priority. As highest, the highest we've gotten at number two post 2008, 2009 recession is $3.5 million. We're increasing that to $12 million. So we're taking a major step forward in that area, and we've also stepped up our vehicle replacement. So we're taking care of the assets that we have in place. And just to kind of put that in perspective, you're doing $25 million in 2023. Couple of months ago, you approved a capital item for $21 million. So just to kind of give you an idea of what that looks like. All right, and then as we go down, debt service, this is our stadium bond debt. This remains flat as we on that schedule as we move forward. And we'll detail how we propose to pay for that in future years. Transfer is out. So this is, I did give you several handouts, and those will be posted on the website in, in addition to the presentation. That's going to detail all of those out for you. A big chunk of those are going to be capital projects that we do in our capital projects fund as well as the transit subsidy and a very variety of other items. But those are going to be detailed out and posted on the website, so you can see those individually. One of the things that you'll notice on that is we did break out the circulator cost. So you're going to see a transit subsidy and then a transit subsidy right below it for $800,000. That's the circulator component. So we'll, we'll walk through that, but just to give you an idea of what that looks like, those are detailed out in your handouts. All right, and then moving down to contingency, you'll notice that it's flat from what it was in 2022, but the makeup has changed a little bit, and I want to run down why. So this is going to be $5.3 million. $2 million of that is to address impacts from the class and pay study. So things like legislative positions that would not, were not considered as a part of that. So we are putting that aside to make sure that we have sufficient funding and we properly address those. If it does not need to be spent, it will remain in contingency, but it gives everybody a little bit more breathing room and feel comfortable as we move forward as we want to make sure that if we, you know, make a position adjustment, that there's not a ripple effect and doesn't cause some inequity. So we have that there as a placeholder. It's very similar to what the Board gave the County Manager last year when we were to address compression for non-certified and sworn positions. So we just repurposed that contingency and changed the name. We did increase it to $2 million, so that is $2 million of the 5.3. Again, part of the normal adoption process, BOC contingency starts out at $1 million. That's another, the next largest section of that. And then we have items like shift differential, storm debris, sick leave buyback, holiday pay for part-time positions, change of venue for capital crimes. And then we have succession planning and employee recognition. And then we also have County Manager undesigned contingency and employee appreciation. So those are the breakdowns, and I'm happy to post that on the website and give you a copy of it as well. Definitely wanted to include it as a read-off, but I, I think it'd be good to give you a hard copy of that as well. So that kind of sums up the general fund and kind of where we are today. And, and then I want to move into the revenue side. Because obviously, these are, these are balanced funds. We just walked through the expense component of that. The general fund proposed millage rate is 8.46, the same amount that it was the previous year. No, no proposed change to the millage rate. And again, very key component, very key point of this is the revenue growth is based on two years of growth. And it's pretty much two factors when we look at property tax. It's going to be digest growth and title-lad valorem tax. Those are the two main drivers of this as we go through these. And if you go down the other revenue sources, you'll notice they're very similar to previous years as we kind of move forward. The only other one that I noticed that was, you know, just wanted to call to your attention is the fines and forfeitures. That had a pretty significant increase. And that was related to the Sheriff's Office and the housing of inmates. But again, that is using to support the inmate medical increase that they're, that they're bringing forward. So that is, that is a big component of that. But the rest are just based on trend and history of where we've gone. No proposed new revenues, no pro- No proposed new revenues, no proposed revenue changes. So this is just simply the revenue structure that we had in place for the last several years, based on growth, population, digest, and all those factors that would drive those revenues up. And some of these are still recovering from the pandemic as we move forward. We did bring some of these down in 2022, as we had a long period of time where courts were no longer in session. We weren't collecting fines. So that was, that did factor in, or it significantly impacted the fines we collected. And then the other one is charges for services. Obviously, during the pandemic, we didn't have programs, like Parks didn't have summer programs and things like that. So we were losing out on those revenues, so we're seeing those come back as those programs have been reinstated. All right. And then this is always the last component that we want to talk about when we talk about the General Fund. This is a very big, very big news for us, I guess, as we move forward. We just had our Braves update, I want to say, what, a month ago? We talked about where we finished 2022 during the pandemic. I want to call your attention to the General Fund property tax line. 2022, $5.8 million is what we budgeted. We're budgeting 3.9 in 2023. And the main driver of that is the restoration of the hotel motel taxes. That has come back to life. That was one of the major funding buckets that we looked at to help fund the stadium debt. And if you remember from the Braves presentation, that originally was budgeted at $1.5 million to fund the stadium debt. We're going to be back at 1.8 is what we're budgeting in 2023. So that is a positive restoration. And the reason is you can see continued growth in the CSSD property tax component. That's the property tax associated with the special district. Any questions on this slide? All right, so the FIRE Fund, this is going to be a unique year for the FIRE Fund for a couple of reasons. If you remember, when we adopted the 2022 budget, we proposed a millage shift from the debt service fund of .13 mills to the FIRE Fund. That will be voted on on July 26, when the board adopts the final millage rate for 2022. The 2023 budget includes that, reflects that millage shift as well. And again, the property tax is based on two years of growth, similar to the General Fund. One of the biggest areas to note here is, again, the personnel increases. This is related to the class and pay compression adjustments that we've done and continue to do in 2023. FIRE does have non-sworn personnel that will benefit from the class and pay study as well. So I know we think FIRE, we think firefighters, but they do have non-certified and sworn employees as well. So that will factor in, as well as the merit for the non-certified and sworn in March. So those will all come into play, but they do also share in the pension, healthcare increases that all, anybody who has a personnel line would share in. One of the areas that you'll note is you'll see an increase in their capital funding. This is something that we desperately struggled with for years coming out of the recession, and they've slowly been able to build on this. So you'll see in 2022, we did 7.1, we're up to 9.5. So we see significant improvement to get them back to that schedule where they're replacing their apparatus per their replacement schedule. So this is a big win as we move forward. Okay. All right, our E-911 Fund. So this is a unique fund because the revenues are capped. This is set by the state at $1.50 per line. This poses some challenges as we move forward. This was increased from $1.25 to $1.50 several years ago, and just like with any revenue source, as it goes up, if it doesn't continue to be adjusted and looked at, it becomes stagnant and doesn't necessarily provide the funding that's required. So as you note, you'll see the charges for service line, that's that funding line. And again, it's capped at $1.50. There was some discussion about looking at that down at the State Capitol, I believe, this year. It did not pass, but hopefully will be revisited again next year. Because their revenue sources are capped, it doesn't have a lot of room for growth. So as we add things like merit, pension, healthcare, things that are already pre-existent that have increased costs, increased costs from contracts, that poses a challenge and strain on this fund. I will say this, this fund isn't in a great position to deal with that strain for several years. At the beginning of 2022, their fund balance was $11.9 million. So that gives them a good amount of breathing room in future years as we move forward. We're proposing to use some of that as we move into 2023 and bring that down as we go through 2023. But again, hope that is something that, in future years, it'll be reconsidered to go up on that rate. If this were to go, let's say, 10 years down the road, there would be some conversations of, how do we want to make up that gap as they bring that fund balance down? There are several systems that do require additional support outside of the 911 fees that they collect. Cobb has not traditionally been one of those. This has been a self-sustaining fund since it was created. I do want to point out that, since we did talk about some of the positions, I'm going to skip back to FIRE real quick because I neglected to mention this. They did request 48 positions. We are proposing seven and a half. And again, that's that other half from the General Fund that we talked about. And then 911 requested 47 positions, and we're proposing six positions. Okay, so we get into the capital funds. We've really addressed all our operating funds, so we're going to talk about the capital funds. These are funds that provide all the capital projects outside of SPOLOST. Okay, so we have our Stadium Capital Maintenance Fund. Please remember, this is 50% funded by the county, 50% funded by the Braves. So the $2.8 million, the county makes up half of that. The Braves make up the other half. Our Capital Projects Funds, this is where we do multi-year capital projects that are not SPOLOST-funded. So for example, that $21 million that you funded a couple of months ago out of the General Fund, some of that was transferred into our 380 Fund. That's our Capital Projects Fund. When we do that, when we know it's a construction project that is going to take more than one fiscal year to complete. So that's where we go ahead and set that aside. The funding's there, and they complete that fund. And there's other projects within that fund that receive annual reoccurring funding. I'll give you a good example, the Unified Court Case Management System. We funded that over a period of several years, and now they are going to begin to spend that down and complete that project over the next couple of years. There's a variety of other ones as well, but those are some good examples. All right, our two water capital projects funds, these are funded by system development fees in the Water Operating Fund as well. So they contribute into these funds, and we complete capital projects within the water system. All right, and these do fluctuate a little bit year to year. You'll notice they're down. This is based on simply the schedule of which projects are coming forward to be completed. So you could see this, this is kind of an up and down fund. There's not necessarily a, just because they're down a little bit from where they were in '22, we maybe didn't complete all the ones we had in last year, and we still are working through those as we move forward to future years. So this does fluctuate from year to year. But you notice the Capital Projects Fund is pretty consistent, and then the Stadium Capital Maintenance is on a schedule. All right, so we have key dates. I know the chairwoman already talked about some of these already, but as you know, we have the work session that we're in today. And then we move into the 2022 millage rate and 2023 budget advertisement will run in the MDJ on June 30. On July 12, will be a public hearing on the proposed budget and millage. So there'll be two public hearings that day. The millage requires more public hearings than the budget. So we'll have our first public hearing on the budget and millage on July 12. We will have our second public hearing on July 19 for the millage. There will not be a public hearing on the budget that night. It'll just be the millage on the July 19. And then on July 26, we will have the third public hearing on the 2022 millage and the adoption of the '23 proposed budget and the 2022 millage rate. So that will be the night which we ask the board to approve the budget and the millage. Okay, so, and then this is just for information, so for you and well as the public, these are the handouts that we will have. These will also be posted on the website, so you'll have a detailed list of every one of those positions that is being proposed as part of '23. The 147 full-time, you have the part-time positions will also be there, as well as any reclasses. Those are included in that position detail. And then we have the budget detail. This is going to be the General Fund detail, as well as the additional backup that'll be associated with that. So we'll kind of let you walk through those. It just gives you a little bit more information. It gives you a breakdown by fund, department, and so on, and category as we go through those. And then we talked about the transfers. So all the transfers are going to be provided there with a brief description of what each one of those are for. And then also, we have the impact items. These are agenda items that the board has already approved that have a financial impact on the 2023 budget. Wanted you to have a list of those because that's always something good to know. We always have that impact statement at the bottom of any agenda item that says this will have an impact on, you know, fiscal year '23. And we can keep a running list of each one of those as we move forward. All right, and now I'll take any questions and comments. I know that was a lot, went pretty quick.
Yes, thank you for that robust presentation, and I'll turn things over to Commissioners to provide any questions or comments, and I'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell and just walk down the dais.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the comments that the chair made prior to your presentation, Bill. You state that you defer to staff, but it is my understanding, when we did the Evergreen Study, the county manager and the directors had come to an agreement of what the starting salary was going to be, and that is not what you chose to announce at the chamber meeting without the rest of the board's knowledge. So again, if we're supporting staff, this is going against staff. And it's also going to create other problems in our public safety with the step and pay that we've put there, compression and everything else. On top of that, what we also need to remember, and while I agree we need to adjust staff's pay, when we do this, contractors are going to adjust their pay, they're still going to be taking our employees, other counties are going to be continuing to adjust their salaries, and we're going to end up right back where we are today. But worse yet is, while we do have a digest growth that will cover this change and this increase this year, we might not have this digest growth in two years, which will impact those constituents that have had to benefit of $100 million in rental assistance that the county has given over these past years and we have until 2025. Because the last time we had a tax increase, it hit them the hardest because commercial properties are not exempt with the homestead exemption. So this will have a future impact to the most critical needs right now in our county. And I think that's something we also need to be taking into consideration. We haven't talked about increasing any contributions to our retirement. Because again, we are increasing salary pay, and we know that the retirement is based on your last three years' salary. So with this increase that's coming up, if we don't address our pension accordingly, we're going to be right back into the same problems that we've had in our pension in the past years that the few previous budgets had provided additional funding to, to help get that more secure. Also, we're not talking about our overtime fund. We're going to be increasing our salaries, which means if there's overtime, you're going to burn through your overtime amount as well. So how is that being changed? As far as the salary positions, I found it very interesting, and again, I'm picking on DOT, and I love our DOT road crew, but I find it very interesting that we are adding more supervisor positions. It's not the supervisor positions that we're having a hard time filling, it's the people that are out doing the maintenance, the cutting, the grass and stuff. So I find it interesting that we're adding so many maintenance and supervisor positions when we can't fill the entry level, the people that are out there actually cutting the grass. I also question that if we can issue a contract for $1 million to cover the 40% shortfall in our staffing, would it be best to not hire additional 10 supervisors and keep that as contracted work? And that goes back to what happened in 2017, '18, when the county did the same thing. They issued $1 million for a contract because we were short of staff, we couldn't keep up on the jobs. And then in 2019, they used over half of that $1 million to then buy equipment because they hadn't gone through it. So my question is, is would it be better to have more staff or contract this out, given our past history? As far as the cityhood discussions, I know this board hasn't had a formal discussion on cityhoods and any, what do we do next? As far as services, it wasn't about services in my district. I have not had any of my constituents sit there and complain about what our parks departments offer. What they do complain about is they want our parks finished, the master plans that are available. So it's not about more staffing or services, it's about having what was promised. The funding to Cobb, Douglas Public Health, I thought that was removed.
So if you recall, their request was over $3 million, and 2.3 of that was for salary adjustments. The 2.3 was removed. The remaining $1,275,000 that was part of their secondary request is still included. So we did reduce their request at the board's, as we met with each board member, that was a concern that was addressed. We had conversations with Cobb Douglas Board of Health. They removed that. They sent a revised request with the 2.3 removed. So that has been taken out, but the remaining $1,275,000 is in the proposed budget.
For what?
It was for additional positions. I can send you their proposal, so I'd be happy to resend that to you so you can see what, exactly what that is, because I don't want to speak. I don't want to misspeak, but I do know it was for positions, and I can share that with you after the meeting.
Okay, so my concern with that is, while we're funding these additional positions, they never responded to my question of how many facilities are in Cobb and how many facilities are in Douglas County? And from what I learned just by going to the website, Cobb County has six facilities, and Douglas County has one facility that essentially covers the needs of the citizens. So my concern is, are these really, these six positions really to serve the needs of Cobb County residents? Or is this also to fill the need of Douglas, which does not provide the same level of service that Cobb County does? This disparity study, first time hearing it was as the chair was speaking. Is it really the role of the county to be studying this and then addressing this? To me, this is something that the chamber is to be doing, not the county, because we should not be picking the winners and the losers in our business fields. What 10 departments did not have their budget request met?
So those were actually 10 departments that did not present a request. So I do want to clarify that. There was 32 departments that presented, 42 overall. And I can, as part of the budget summary, we did list those, but those either had no increase or a minimum increase, which they walked the halls on. So I know, for example, two of them, they come to the top of my head. County Attorney did not present minimum increase or no increase. Internal Audit was a similar one, did not present minimum increase. So I can get you the full list. I know it was part of our presentation when we did the summary or recap at the end of the departmental presentations where we did list those, but I will be happy to send it to you.
Okay, because then, not knowing which 10 they were.
Yes.
My next question was, what are the plans for them in the future? Because I know that's some things that, you know, like the courts, we heard a lot that, you know, they've had budget requests in the past and they weren't funded. So that was my follow-up question.
Yes, and to be clear, like even some of those that didn't present, I believe Internal Audit was one of those, and I could be wrong, they may have presented, but in my mind, I'm thinking they were. They did receive funding through this budget process. So just because they didn't present it, because their request was minimum, doesn't mean they didn't receive their request funded.
Right, because they were funded through contingency in 2020.
Correct. And we are adding, as I think as the chair stated at the beginning, that was one of the departments that received a plus up in positions as a part of the 2023 proposed budget.
Right.
Yes.
Right. And then, you have an air.
What's that?
You have an air.
Okay.
I'll let you guess which thing your air is on.
We were happy to look at it. We have changed this, I just want to say, 40 times since last Monday. So we are even having everybody foot it again this morning, so we will be happy to take any feedback we can, and we are trying to, and especially when we go from showing one decimal point and round that through the summary slides, it was a challenge as we moved one decimal point and the number changed and then tracking it all the way through. So we're happy to take your feedback.
It's your $3 hotel motel.
I'm sorry?
It's your $3 hotel motel.
Okay.
If we're taking 3.6, and then we're giving 2.4 to Cobb Travel and Tourism.
Yes.
It's not 1.8 remaining, it's 1.188.
Okay, we will definitely look at that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then also, are we going to be looking at adjusting the agreement that we have with Cobb Travel and Tourism as far as the percentage, because that does expire?
Yes, so the feedback that I've currently received from the board in having those conversations is, we're going to do the one-year extension for 2023 and then look at negotiating a new contract with them that would be less restrictive on where that funding can be used and open it more up to how it can be used throughout the entire county. Because as you know, right now, the funding is coming from the special Because as you know, right now, the funding is coming from the special service district, which means the funding can only be spent in the special service district. And there is a desire to look at how they can use that throughout the county, which would change the way we fund those. So we're discussing ideas, we'll meet with the county attorney's office, Cobb Travel and Tourism, also with the board to discuss how we want to achieve that objective of freeing up that money, not necessarily changing the amount, or possibly changing the amount, obviously that'll be up to the board, but freeing up that money that can be used throughout the entire county versus one small section of the county.
Okay, so the $3 night hotel motel was also supposed to be used to pay for the circulator bus.
Yes.
So how much is the circulator bus costing the county? Because that's not in here.
It's part of your inter-fund transfer. So what we've done, and this has been very fluid as we've gone through the $3 room night, and this has changed since the inception. The very beginning, all of the $3 room night was used to fund the stadium debt, and then a piece was used to fund the circulator. Then we added pieces for PD overtime as well, and then basically then we included Cobb Travel and Tourism. So we've looked at those different buckets, and we've tried to calculate how we could best use those funds by meeting all the objectives within the county. The transit subsidy remains intact, so the circulator is being funded out of the transit subsidy, because if you send it to the general fund from the $3 room night or to the transit fund, you're still going to accomplish the same objective. The net impact is the general fund dollars that we want to look at, where those dollars can be used. And there has been a variety of different ways, so that's why I always want to show the board how it's being proposed to be used. And if the board's direction is saying, no, no, I don't want to do that, I want to do, fund PD overtime, you're still sending it to the general fund regardless. So that's one of those conversations of however you, the board chooses to use it, unless you're sending it for the circulator, it's going to the general fund regardless. Unless you're sending it to Cobb Travel and Tourism, that component is definitely going outside.
So the circulator subsidy, is that still coming from the CARES fund that we got, right? Or is that?
So the, I'm going to, we're able to hold the general fund subsidy flat, and we actually have significant savings in it because the transit federal dollars that have come in have been used to offset some of the operational increases. So what we worked through with transit is that is a finite period of time, so we're holding the general fund subsidy flat, and they're more than likely we're going to realize some savings in it in both 20, we did in 2021, we'll probably realize some savings in 2022 and 2023 as they use those federal dollars versus depleting that all coming down and then trying to come back up for a higher increase. And like, my concern would be is if we reduced it by $5 million for a period of two years, and then I have to come back and ask you for $7 or $8 million because of the natural flow of increase. So we're leaving that intact as we move forward and give everybody a little bit of breathing room, and then they're using federal dollars, which do, are very limited, but can be used for operations as we move forward. General fund does have a component of the circulator that we will fund, is detailed out on your inter-fund transfer sheet as well. So again, it's completely up to the board at how you want to use those funds. But again, if you use a circulator, it is approved use because it's within the special service district. So that would be another approved use, it's just where's the priority at? And our goal was to reduce the impact on the general fund by the methodology that we selected.
And then, the only other comment is on contingency, and this kind of stems from the conversation we had yesterday in work session. I mean, do we have $12 million of outstanding projects that this could be used for? The reason why I'm saying that is because, again, we've got this $4 million that's, you know, kind of hanging out there.
Sure.
That we are not dedicating it to, and kind of my position is, is, you know, if we've got capital projects that need to be done, you know, that money should be going to that, not just the board waiting for something to come to fund it. I mean, if the first priority is the county, then we need to be putting that to the county. So what would be those $12 million of capital request? I'm guessing we've got the list, but what's that going to go towards?
So the 12 million, what we do is we're putting in undesigned contingency, very similar to what we did with the 3.5. Our plan is because we know that the overall request, well, I think we were looking at 50-plus million, and we're funding roughly 25?
25.
25.5 million of that, and again, 6 million of that is vehicle replacement and then so on. But of the 12, what we're going to bring back is a comprehensive list from, based on the department's request. And so one of the things to keep in mind is because the board approved the $21 million of capital, some of those were part of the 23 requests, so those kind of came off the table. So we're going to have a very good and in-depth conversation with every department that submitted requests and have conversations, and there may be a pressing need that has popped up since the requests were really submitted in September that we may need to look at. So we are going to bring a comprehensive list back before the board. Our goal is to bring that before the start of the fiscal year or at the very beginning of the fiscal year.
And so are we going to start using that money to, because we've been talking about having to potentially replace 100 Cherokee because of the courts expanding. So are we using any of this money to potentially accommodate future changes that we know that are going to be coming down the pipeline?
I'm going to let the county manager address that.
Good question. That particular 12 million is not for any future facility. What I would like to do is welcome each of you on a facility tour. I just did one about four hours on yesterday, and I know that the folk in the courts would love to have you take a look at some of the issues they're experiencing as it relates to capital, some of the things that I've observed and seen that are held together literally by a shoestring. So if any of you would like a tour of some of the facilities that we are considering renovating or doing some updates to, please let me know, we'd be happy to do that. And I know these departments would appreciate you laying eyes on some of the things that they come to you to ask funds for. But to answer your question specifically, we would have to come back to the board with a request for that type of facility, a new build or a purchase of a facility for a new admin building. That 12 million doesn't even come close.
Right, but I also know we're adding 147 new employees, and I don't know how many of them are going to the courts, because I haven't seen that detail, but, you know, I've been to the courts, and the question is, is where are you going to put them?
At this point, just trust this, as the CEO of the county, I got it. We got it. We're going to figure out how we're going to do it, but we got it. We've been working with the courts and others to figure out how we're going to do it, but let me just say this, there's only so much retrofitting we can do. There's only so many closets and spaces we can put people, but until this board, you know, comes back with a recommendation from staff as to how we address it, in the meantime, they need the people more than they need the space. So we are figuring it out, Commissioner.
And Commissioner, I'll just answer your question. The courts, including the DA and solicitor, will receive 32 new positions. That's the court side of the House, including DA and Solicitor, 32 new ones.
Because, I mean, I have gone over and had tours by our various courts, and, you know, I understand the situation, so that's why the question is, is, you know, I'm glad we're giving them the staffing, but, you know.
We're going to figure it out. Property has done Yoma's work in coming in and taking a look at space in the court and trying to figure out how we can maximize that. And so we're going to do what we have to do to give them what they need to do their jobs, but I also recognize, you are right, there are only so many places we can put people. And as the legislature continues to mandate new judges, it comes with a lot of people. So we are not, we're not in a position to say you don't need the people, we can't give you the people because we don't have the space, because it's a double-edged sword right about now, right? But at the end of the day, we've talked to the chairwoman about this, she's very much aware that we have to have a conversation around what do we do with them. I think Sharon Stanley is meeting with the courts to talk with them about what their specific needs are, so we can determine what facility is best suited for a new court, what is the best facility for an administration building. As we look at post-COVID implications and trends, do we need, you know, what are our needs as a result of folk teleworking? So we're going to be bringing back all of those things as we look at our facility needs and say, here it is, we can do option A or B, give us some direction, and then we'll take it from there and go as far as we can and come back to the board and see what your will is to fund those facilities. But I appreciate the question.
So have we advertised it as a tax increase for the fire fund?
It will be, it will legally have to be advertised as a general fund tax increase, even though we're not increasing the millage because we're not going to the rollback rate. So that is a legal requirement, yes, ma'am.
Okay, but is it going to be clear, I guess, to the constituents that?
It is never clear. It is the wording that is required, legally required for us to publish, and we would love for it to be different, because it will say tax increase, and even if your millage rate is the same, because it did not go to the rollback rate. So it is the legally required language that we have to issue, and it will be advertised in the MDJ.
So, but are we going to put, because what, the fire is at what, is it 2.8?
2.86.
2.86, so are we going to say it's going to go from 2.86 to 2.99?
So that is also one of the unique parts, is the only one that you legally have to advertise is the general fund part. So when we do our millage presentation on, I believe, July 12th, that will be a very big part of our presentation to talk about that, is to say the fire fund millage rate currently is 2.86 mils, it'll go to 2.99 mils, and we'll even talk about the fact of where it was previously, kind of maybe the chain of events, but yes, that is one of those things. And one of the areas that we also want to hit home when we have that presentation is if you live in Cobb County and you live in a city that provides their own fire service, you will actually receive a .13 mil reduction to your tax bill from the county, because you will not be paying the debt service fund, and you are not legally required to pay the Cobb County's fire fund. So we'll have, that is going to be a very good conversation, and it will be part of our presentation. Unfortunately, that is not part of our advertisement, and our advertisement is very much defined by law of what it has to look like, the language associated with it.
And then on E911, since they're now dipping into their fund balance, do we know how, if they're starting to dip into their fund balance, how many years they can go until it could potentially impact the general fund?
Sure, so like I said, that was one of the things I want to start off with, is at the end, at the beginning of 2022, they had $11.9 million. We're adopting a budget proposing using 1.3. Realistically, they'll use less than that, because they'll have savings related to vacancies and things like that, operational savings, just like they would every other year. We do anticipate they will dip into that a little bit in 2023. In 2022, they're very close to break even, so we do anticipate that coming down, but let's just say, you know, you use, just for argument's sake, I think it'll be less, but let's say use $1 million of that a year. You can use $1 million of that in 2023, you'll be down to 10 million, roughly 10.9 million. And then it's just going to, it depends on what other things the board chooses to do to fund that, to continue to implement. Now, we talked about reoccurring merit, that has an ongoing impact, and we, as employees, we all love it, but that's, so one of those things is that be mindful, is that there are funds, 911 or water or any fund that is outside the general fund itself funded that has to deal with that impact. And we just have to be mindful, some of that, we are legally able to raise rates and adjust, others we're not. 911 currently is one of those that we cannot adjust. General fund, we can rely on tax digest growth or other revenue growth to offset those. 911 has not been one of those that has continued growth. So once we hit that ceiling, unless there is a state legislative change to that rate structure, you are capped at that rate.
Okay, I have other questions, but I can ask you those separate. And then just kind of a last general comment, I know the county has put out some advertisements lately stating, you know, again, we've got the lowest millage rate around. And while that is correct, I think we also need to look at, while we're comparing ourselves to other counties as far as millage rate, we also need to look at the value of their mill compared to ours, because our mill is stronger than other counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate your comments. There are some outstanding things that she did bring up that I wanted to get your help to address and possibly staff.
Absolutely.
I know we did talk about contingency, and that's not just looking back at outstanding needs identified, but we have to cover what may come up during the fiscal year.
Absolutely, so Chairwoman, that's a great point, and some of those items that we have in there is that VOC contingency, that's a looking forward to address budgetary items or impacts that are not foreseen when we adopt this budget. So there's $1 million out of the gate that is available to the VOC to use. And then we have several others like storm debris. We can't predict when there's going to be a storm and what that impact will be. And then we also have change of venue and a few other items that would have, are more future-looking for things that we cannot foresee or plan for.
Very good, thank you. And, you know, I just want to clarify that there is a $4 million amount that's been set aside for commissioners to be able to be responsive to requests, but I think there was a comment made that those might not be county requests, and the Board of Commissioners is the county, our citizens are the county, and them utilizing those dollars for that purpose is responding to county needs. I just don't want to make it seem like that's a purely separate bucket, it's just enabling them to be responsive to things that they're hearing or seeing as a need. There was a comment made with respect to the disparity study, and that has been articulated from the very beginning as an interest. I apologize if the Commissioner wasn't clear about that being considered. This is something that's very similar to what was considered when we built our stadium. We did have goal metrics in there, however, we did not, we were not able to set that based on a proportion of businesses. This was basically considered because the Braves had a good relationship with their business community and knew they wanted to be able to commit a certain spend, and that gave us opportunity to consider this as accounting. But it's very hard to set a goal or a target of what you want to reach unless you know the climate of your environment, and we just don't until we have that technical analysis done. And it's not that we're choosing winners and losers, but we're providing a greater opportunity for participation for those businesses. I would like to see some follow-up, again, just to underscore the Cobb Douglas Public Health, if you didn't take a note of that. I do know Douglas County provides a significant amount of investment towards Cobb Douglas Public Health per capita, and we have been communicated with about not doing that as substantially as Douglas County. And so while we may not have parity with them, I can assure the board that they're providing substantial investment into that organization. I serve on the board of that organization.
And Chairwoman, just as a follow-up, one of the things that I do commit to the board is, and I'll do this as soon as this meeting's concluded, is I will send you their revised request as well as any additional information. We've had very good communication with them as we've gone through this process.
Very good. And, you know, I did want to address the parks and recreation comment is that, you know, I expressly sat in a cityhood meeting in West Cobb and heard the desire for programming in West Cobb, which is why that helped to fuel my desire to be responsive to that. So while I appreciate the Commissioner observing what she heard from her constituents, I know from being in a meeting with constituents of West Cobb, that they expressly desire to see Parks and Recreation staff put events and other services in their community to create a sense of place. There was a question about contracted services with respect to DOT, and we oscillate back and forth with this. There was a time where all of our right-of-way maintenance was contracted, and we had so many complaints from constituents, then we moved back to having the staff do it. And even prior to that, the staff did it first, and then we had issues with staffing, then we moved to doing it on a contractual basis. I mean, right now, whether or not you work for Cobb County government or you work outside, everybody's dealing with workforce issues. And particularly if you have people that are working on maintenance issues, it's a very competitive environment, and it's sometimes hard for us to keep up with what the private sector can offer, particularly when they have bigger jobs that are paying more. So I'm grateful that we're making the investment that we are making in DOT and hoping that this additional funding will enable them to continue to address the gap that we had when this was a completely contracted service. I know we had some discussions with respect to funding of retirement, at least when we had our discussions with the rating agencies, and I'd like for you to be able to address that.
Absolutely, so the county has been hovering around 50% funded for their retirement plan for several years. We've made a lot of plan changes, we've actually closed the amortization period, we've changed the assumed rate of return, we've done a lot of things to make a very conservative approach. The rating agencies have approved the county's plan, and at that time was a 30-year plan, we're down to year 23. Last year was a tremendous win for the county's retirement plan. We went from 53% to 60% funded for the first time since I can even remember. It's been hovering low 50s, 50- time since I can even remember. It's been hovering low 50s, 50% to 53% for what seems like the past decade. The county's, like I said, taken positive steps. So view this as a mortgage. The fact that if your mortgage were to go from 50% paid off to 60% paid off in one year, that's a tremendous change. So, and that's really what we're dealing with here, is this, this was a 30-year plan. So we expected to take small bites of that apple, just because the fact that the county has done so many proactive changes with this plan, we took a positive step forward. We do have the proposed step increase to the county's pension included in the proposed budget. So there is an increased cost. And yes, Commissioner is absolutely right. As you add staff, as you add salary increases, that does have an impact. But that's part of our annual bite of that apple that we take every year. So we do look at that, and that is included in this budget, not to say that you won't see a change as we move forward, because that's going to depend on a lot of factors. One, how much does the county pay? How does the market perform? So those are the two main driving factors of that. But we are seeing significant improvements, and we hope to continue to do so. This year will be a challenging year, as we know what the market looks like. It's not very good. We may take a little bit of a step back, but we took such a huge step forward last year, even a slight step back is still puts us ahead of schedule. So we feel like we're in a great place from a pension standpoint. We have that conversation with the rating agencies each and every year, provide them an update. I always, that is one of our, I won't say negatives, but that is one of our challenges that we face as the county, our funding ratio. A good funding ratio is 80%. Okay? We've been at 50% for, for a long time. The fact that we moved from 53% to 60% is a huge step forward. And I think they recognize that, and they, they like our plan as we move forward. So if we would have went from 53% to 54%, they would have been happy, because we're following our plan. The fact that we went from 53% to 60% is a huge step. So we, we feel like we're in a good spot, and we just need to continue to fund the plan, continue to follow the plan.
Thank you. And finally, I wanted to address the starting pay of 17 an hour. I'm addressing a comment made that this was done without staff. None of the presentation that was brought forward today could have been provided without staff and communicating with our leadership. And I know all of our commissioners couldn't participate in the pay-in-class discussion, and that's when this initial conversation came up. In fact, I was moved to put forward a starting salary of $18 an hour, and I asked staff to consider a starting wage of 16, well, up to 18, and they provided different impacts to the budget based on $16 an hour, $17 and $18 an hour. I can't say that there was a song of kumbaya when I spoke about that, but I can share that if we had a meeting of the minds on all of these matters, we will be presenting a budget of 650 positions. And the reality is, we're not always going to agree on everything. But I'm very concerned from the conversations that I've had with leaders throughout the metro area, even some from our rural counties, that they have not been competitive, even going as far as Monroe County with starting salaries of $15 an hour. And what I don't want is for us to think we're going to have a panacea with the budget of presenting a $15 an hour budget and still not be able to bring people in the door. And, you know, I would like for Cobb County to be able to be competitive. I would like for Cobb County to be able to lead on this, and to, again, be able to attract employees that would choose working here over working in some other industries that, to me, don't require the same level of commitment as it does to public service. And I'm hoping that there'll at least be two other commissioners on this Board who are supportive of that. The way things are going, I don't even know if this will even be competitive next year, every time I listen to, you know, a new business or, or an existing business sharing their introductory salaries. But I'm, I'm taken back by the fact that it wasn't known until that presentation. I apologize for that. I shared this with staff, and all of us have been providing feedback to staff, and there have been many iterations of our budget presentations going to all the commissioners. And again, I apologize to you, Commissioner. The state of the county was the first time you heard that, but I can certainly share with you that I have been communicating with staff on this, and it at least has been assessed. And it was my thought that it was included in all of the other documents with the changes we were making to the budget presentation. So with that, we've heard from one Commissioner. We still have three more to go, and I'm going to turn things over to you, Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. Certainly thank you to staff. Thank you to the county manager. Thank you to Bill. Your endurance is truly a spectacle. But yeah, so this is, we know, we had some really big decisions to make this year with, as a, as a Board. There, there were some systemic issues that we wanted to address, and hopefully that's something apparent for everyone as part of the first couple of slides that were put together for this presentation. And there are a few things that I do want to call out that I was excited to see. Before, before I get that, and I do want to ask one clarifying question, because I did not see that in this presentation, but there is a decrease in the percent of the water transfer, correct?
Thank you for asking that, because as soon as we started, Commissioner comments, I, I know, I was like, I gotta say this before Commissioner Burrow speaks. So thank you for asking that. And yes, there is. We're decreasing the water transfer by 1%. I apologize for not specifically saying that or including in the presentation.
It was a given.
But I do promise you, the 1% reduction is in the budget.
Absolutely. So to not take away from the thunder on Commissioner Burrow's standpoint with this, you know, definitely kudos for, for being a big champion in that over, over the last several years and making sure that that was a priority. We do know that, in general, there are systemic issues, though. We know this doesn't solve half of them, but hopefully it does solve some of them, that being the competitiveness piece. So I am also happy to see that our chief medical examiner won't be cleaning his lobby, and being able to actually do the role that he was hired to do and bring in others to do specifically designated roles as well. Internal audit, we know we're getting into a more complex world. Cybersecurity, if you ever want to chat with me about that stuff, happy to do so. But happy to see some, some capacity built up there. Happy to see some additional capacity in stormwater. You know, there are a couple of positions coming in. Probate court, we've heard, we've heard those presentations a couple of times, so certainly excited to see that. And elections, I know I saw Janine earlier, I mean, just so, so much that elections has gone through over the last several years. I mean, all of our departments have, but yours certainly on a public sta, a very national public stage. So appreciate seeing some capacity being built up there as well. There are some other comments that were brought up, and I know we've had some conversations where, because we do the two cycle when it comes to our budget, we have our digest that, that we do the projections off of. We're all very aware of going into inflation at this point in time, and one of the, I know, deep considerations I had and shared with other commissioners was, where can we turn over stone? Where can we find something at least either padding for the future, or is, is there even an opportunity to give something back, knowing what might come? We're not in that space yet, but knowing what might come. But with that, you know, we hope that everyone can feel some ease that the military won't increase, at least for the general fund, that we are able to address some, when I say deeply systemic issues, I mean deeply systemic issues. We don't have the capacity to bring people up into upper management, the retention. I mean, we're facing extraordinary levels of attrition in certain capacities, and our staff is being stretched to just maintain the same level of service. So, you know, just hoping, hoping that everyone is sensitive to that, as we are trying to be very sensitive to what might come. But that, the way the budget is structured, even if we do go into a deep recession, the recovery period will be a little bit different because of the calendaring that we do on our budget cycles and how those projections are based. So we will actually have a little time after, during the next cycle to prepare for any downswings that may, that we may have to encumber. And I'm looking at you because, I see you nodding.
Yes.
Want you to just kind of share a little bit more for people on that front, too?
Yes, it is definitely something we're very aware of, of, you know, the potential of a recession and what that would look like. And having gone through the last one, one of the things that is unique about county government, and especially the way we collect our property taxes, the way we do our assessments, is that we are going to be one of those last in, last outs to a recession. So when the recession takes place, it doesn't have an immediate impact on us from a, from an operational standpoint, as far as an immediate reduction of revenue. Where we do see it is more so in our SPOS collections. But that these operating funds take about a year or two to really see that impact as we move forward. So we do have time to pivot and shift. And one of the things that we talk about when we go through this is we still take a very conservative approach on our revenue projections. So maybe, maybe to a fault. And, and that's one of those things that we look at, is we say, you know, okay, we know the tax digest grew by 12% plus this year. We, we didn't budget anything, because we're, at the time we adopted that budget, we were at the full swings of a pandemic, and we said, no, we are going to take a conservative approach in case this goes south. Now, we are able to add to that for this year, and you're, the Board is able to accomplish a lot of the objectives that, that you've discussed at the retreats, as well as in the individual meetings. But with that being said, we still took a conservative approach on the projected growth for '23. So we do take that into account. So we do want to make sure we have some room there, and then we do have a very strong fund balance for the first time in a long time. That is something that the Board took positive steps on with the fund balance policy, and we continue to see that as a return and a benefit to the county. So that gives us that ability to weather a recession, weather an economic downturn. So we do have some good, we are very well positioned to, to weather a recession as we move forward. And then, you know, having gone through the '08, '09 recession, one of the first things that easily, that usually comes out is capital. Until this year, you didn't have any capital to pull out of the budget, really. I mean, it's 3.5 million. That doesn't get you very much. So you have $25 million in capital for the first time since pre-recession levels, if not well before that. So it gives you some room and flexibility. Now, we would love to say capital's going to always be there, because we're going to take that conservative revenue approach, but it does give you one more lever to pull as we go down, you know, and see what that looks like.
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing the extra detail on that front. Next thing, there was a comment made about retirement. So when I, we referenced kind of those systemic issues, and certainly we do have to look at the impact on the retirement fund. And we know that when we talk about competitiveness, it's not going to be in the quote-unquote rat race of salary tit-for-tat from public and, and private sector. So we understand that situation. But we do know that there is at least a minimum, and that was what we wanted to meet, plus some. But being mindful that one of the greatest benefits was retirement. And I know, you know, one of the things that I want us to key in on for the next round is to look at those systemic issues around retirement and identify ways to make a commitment that is predictable, because that's one of the issues with retirement plans, is the unpredictability of them and the impact to the budget. But I think that there are some potential models that could be pursued to, to, to really pull that lever and, and take out some of the additional burdens that both staff and that the county budget has to endure.
Well, and, and that was a common theme that was shared by a lot of the commissioners in our meetings. And I know that was communicated to myself and the county manager, and that is something that we have on our radar for 2023. One of the biggest parts of the retirement for the hybrid employees, and that's the employees that have been here, I guess, less than 10 years now, January 1 of 2010, so almost 11 years, is the, is the matching. So that is something that I know we're going to have a conversation in and around for, for 2024. And, but part of the big reason that we look at it, our current structure is, you contribute four, we'll match your four 100%. We still have a lot of employees that don't contribute four, that, you know, barely contribute one. So they're missing out on that benefit, and the reason being is they say they, they can't afford to do it based on pay. So by doing, looking at the class and pay first, we're hoping that will help employees invest in their future. And then we would look at possibly the matching component for 2024, and possibly other changes, as we, you know, have a big focus on that pension as we move forward.
I would say it's definitely the other changes I'm more interested in, because just the match itself puts us right in the line of the private sector.
Yeah.
And we cannot compete when it comes to this. There are some other models we must pursue.
Absolutely. We're going to, we're going to have some very good conversations, and basically our plan is, as soon as this is approved in July, we get to start to work on '24. So there's, there's really no downtime. We'll start having some good conversations and see what can be done.
Absolutely. And one of the things I, I, just to echo something Commissioner Gamble had brought up, I would like to see if there is an impact with the retirement plans and the salary adjustments. I know that there were some, and I think we just need some additional clarity for how pensions are calculated as well.
Absolutely. So they take a snapshot every December to, for the, the current year salaries, and the, the pension calculation is based on current year salaries as a percentage. So for example, the one that we are using for 2023 was a January 1 snapshot. They provide us basically an annual evaluation in the spring. Usually it's in May. I think we got it end of May, early June, and we use that as the basis for budgeting for '23. So we always have that. And then also, as a part of being on the pension board, what we're going to be doing in 2023 is have an experience study, and we do those every five years to see how are we trending based on what the assumptions are, meaning, you know, from everything from, are people retiring sooner, are people living longer, living less, less amount of time, all those assumptions that factor in. And then they get, provide us a new set of projections to say, this is what your annual contribution was, is going to look like. And then we always use that to mirror, to say, okay, you know, you said it was going to be X dollars, and we've contributed X dollars, and we are actually to, at the end of last year, we met the dollar amount that they said, and, and a little extra. Every year we try to give a little bit extra, but we have far exceeded the funding ratio.
Right.
Where basically they said we'd be, you know, 53, 54, we're at 60. Now, a big part of that is market. So there's, there's a lot of factors again, but every five years we do have an experience study to see, do we need to make any significant changes to assumptions, and where are we tracking based on where they said we'd be five years ago?
Okay, excellent. And I, now, are there different ways to calculate how it's a what is in pension as well?
Yes, we, we look at, we look at a variety of different ways. So what we try to do is limit these fluctuations year to year, because it makes it easier for the county to budget. We take, I don't say, I won't say maybe a little bit more aggressive approach to say, we're going to fund at a little bit higher level, so we don't have big peaks and swings. We don't want it to change, you know, 10 million one year and then go down 4 million. We want this to be very smooth and steady as we go through this. Now, the vast majority of what you fund today is retirees. I mean, that is, that is something that you heard when Roger Tutterow presented the pension update. The, the vast majority of what is currently being funded is the retirees because of a plan change that was done in, in the late 1990s. So that, that is something that we're still paying the price for a little bit. It's not necessarily the hybrid employees that we're, that we're having to, you know, come, the county, where the county's coming out of pocket, it's on the retiree side. So
Right.
We are paying down that liability.
Okay. And then another thing that was brought up was around overtime and the impact on overtime. I believe the point of getting the positions in and raising the, the dollar amount, the seven, to 17, and also the, the pay-in-class implementation is to make sure that we're not having to lean on overtime as much and also get better quality for that result?
Yes, absolutely. Overtime is really a lot of case driven by the fact that we have so many vacancies. And when you have the vacancies, overtime goes up, because you're having less employees work, to do the work for multiple, or for the normal amount of people. And that's one of the areas that we're looking at, is we're hopeful that the class and pay will be effective to bring in those people, where you're actually not having to use as much overtime.
Okay. And maybe perhaps we can do some type of, and it probably already is, but maybe something for commissioners, like a check-in to know, you know, how are we on pace? Are we on track with meeting that expectation? You know, are we seeing an uptick in the applications? And I know it'll be somewhat difficult going into a recession. Maybe it'll be helpful. I don't know. But maybe some type of check-in.
And, and honestly, one of the positive sides of a recession is county always sees an uptick in hiring.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if you're going to have one positive out of it, that's, that's usually one that you see.
Okay. Let's see. Supervisory. So there was a comment about DOT supervisory roles, and Drew left. I don't know if anyone else is here from DOT, but I was just going to ask, because I had seen a presentation that it was going to be a shift in how the organization was structured, that that was the goal for the supervisory roles, and it was to provide some more oversight and strength over the project management aspect, which ideally would conserve some of the costs and make it a little bit easier to, to, to make that work. But I don't, I don't see anyone in the audience that can kind of, unless you have any.
I do not.
We can get you the answer to, to your question, specifically with the, with the Director.
Thank you. And then I, I was going to have a follow-up on that with the 40% shortfall, because yes, of course, we are experiencing a deep vacancy. But it was my understanding that that $1 million contract didn't equate to the 40% vacancy. It was just, these are the dire needs right now. Can we hurry up and get something in, because it's happening right now. So I'll follow up on that, too.
It was to fill the gap.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then with regard And then with regards to the city's comment, I, I will say that, that the biggest focus that came up around parks was less so about the programming and more so about the capital investment. For one of my Cityhood movements, their findings, of course, is they want a park. But definitely interested in, in hearing if there were some specific needs that came in through staff, I do want to hear that as well, what the programming aspects were or what the ideas are. I don't, unless you want to share, Mike. All right, you're fine. Let's see.
Commissioner, I can address that if you would like, a little bit of it. It did come up during some of the, the observations around Cityhood. But even prior to the Cityhood discussions, we have increasingly been stretched with, with events or lack of staff to be able to do events from groundbreakings to ribbon cuttings to you name it. We pretty much rely on Michael and his team to do everything for a county this big. So even prior to Cityhood discussions at all, we were struggling to be able to have his staff be able to do every event, every event setup, teardown, you name it, they're always there. But if someone were out with COVID, someone's out ill, you name it, he has an adverse impact on his team. He and DOT. So regardless of that, we needed to, to help him with the, the amount of events that we provide in this county. I think that you all probably get a five or six page, single spaced calendar about every month from the Public Services Agency and just the events that we provide on a, on a monthly basis. About six pages, single spaced.
And that's what I wasn't sure if, if there was an implication that there was a shortage of programming. So it's like, that was definitely new for me. I, I had seen a lot of programs, but certainly I've heard from staff, a limit of, of capacity to maintain.
Yes.
Okay. With regards to public health, where I was comfortable with providing funds, and I do still, I would like to see, you know, if there is any type of data associated with how services are filled. I do know that we have some pretty aspirational programs around mental health with regards to Cobb County, Cobb Douglas Public Health Board and, and our public safety personnel. And I really appreciate the efforts and the collaboration that takes place. I know KSCU plays a role as well with some of the experience studies. So I would like to see some of those programs continue on. And, you know, like I say, if there is any data, I'm sure that would be helpful. I think this is my, two questions, one kind of a, not a, not a, not a full question, but a one, one comment thing. So the, the next one I have is with regards to, I believe, a $3 fund and how that's organized. Is there a standing policy that's publicly available for people to see?
So the, the only thing that we are obligated to do with that right now is the Cobb Travel and Tourism funding based on the one year extension. So that is the only obligation. And then outside of that, there is a legal document related to the funding of the special service district that spells out specifically what it can be used for within the district. It does say, I believe, government, governmental services within the district, debt service would be, would be included in that. But we, you know, we've used it for a variety of things. There's not anything that says you have to use it for X outside of the generic description. It has to be used within the, the special service district and a few other things. But I'll be happy to get you that language. And then up to outside, as long as you meet that requirement, it's solely up to the Board of Commissioners to determine how you want to use those funds.
Correct. And I remember we visited part of this in the Braves presentation. So, you know, I think it may be helpful, the same way that we have other breakdowns of some of these other funds. It might be just to see what the board at this point has done and how it's decided to, to allocate and distribute those funds.
Okay.
And that way we can stay consistent against our own policy on that. Or if we want to make any changes to it, it's there for public discourse. And then last question is, when are we expected to, what's the year for anticipated, anticipated for the stadium payoff?
Ooh. I will have to get back to you on that. I, I don't want to guess. I know it was a 30-year bond. So I guess what it would be 44? Buddy will get you the exact date.
Thank you. That concludes all of my comments and questions. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Well, first of all, thanks, Bill, for you and your team and county manager and everyone that contributed to get this to where we are today. There are things on here that I totally support, and there are some things that I don't. And I think a lot has been covered. I am happy to see the water transfer being reduced by a percent because it stayed the same last year. And that was kind of a trade off to get public safety stepping grade where they need to be. So I'm glad to see that's progressing this year and hopefully next year.
Yes.
As well, to get the compression out. So my concern, well, I guess my biggest concerns are the, I, I do support the pay and class study. I think we do need to be competitive for retention within municipal and county government jurisdictions. I know we can't compete with the private sector or nor should we be. But we do have a great team in Cobb and hopefully we, with the pay and class salaries and, and wages going up, that will help with retention. My concern about jumping from nine or $10 an hour to 17 is compression. With people that have been here and are not making that and jumping them up, what is that going to do to, to bring in new people at 17? And we have people that have been here five years that will be making the same thing as someone new. It's, I'm not sure how that's going to pan out.
Good observation, but we did address that in the study. We address what the $17 an hour would do throughout the county. So just as we are addressing compression in public safety with the stepping grade, we are addressing compression as it relates to the pay and class. The difference is we're addressing it all at one time in this budget as opposed to spreading it out over three years with stepping grade. But it is addressed.
Well, the national average is my understanding is 15. So why would we go to 17? It's, I'm just saying what I think I could support and not support. So on the, well, first of all, 148 new positions. And we haven't been approving new positions for a while. And I understand the need there. But I think with the list, I think it still needs to be prioritized. And maybe, I, I feel like with the pay and class being implemented in, what, if this is approved in September, a month early, or when it, when will it be implemented? Jackie, Bill?
The goal is to implement it during the last pay period of September with board approval.
Right.
Yes.
But this, this, because this is starting October 1, that would be a separate decision of board.
Right. Okay. So my, my point is why, with the pay and class study being implemented and the increase in the salaries and then a merit increase in March, is that, the merit increase that's proposed, is that a 3% or how much?
So we're, we're having discussions around how that would look. I know the county manager is having, we're having some discussions about the, the new process. So I can say it's performance based. We're trying to have some conversations around, should there be a difference between meets and exceeds? We went ahead and set aside roughly, I think we did three and a half as a placeholder. But those conversations are ongoing. And then also, the reason we did three and a half is because we are waiting to see what the, once we have the new roster after class and pay, there will be an impact. So that's one of the things we wanted to give ourselves a little bit of room in that, in that, in that number. So I, I'll let the county manager just talk a little bit about what that's going to look like and kind of what, where we are in that process, I guess.
So it's budgeted for three and a half merit max? That's the max?
It's budgeted at three and a half percent. But there's always an opportunity where someone may get just three, someone may get a needs improvement, so they may not get any. So when he talks about it's budgeted at three and a half, that is correct. However, if we look at, for example, exceed and exceeds will get four. As we revise the process, there, there has to be strong justification for an exceeds. So not everybody is going to get the four. But the money is, is, is already budgeted to account for.
Where did four come from? I thought you said it was three and a half.
So three and a half percent is budgeted. Bill just mentioned, we're in conversation about how then do we differentiate between a person who gets a meets and gets three and an exceeds and gets three. So when we look at how do we continue to reward those employees who go consistently above and beyond, we thought about fractions above the 3% normal merit. But it is already, it, it's already encompassed in the budget that you are adopting. So we're not asking for additional monies for that. Does that make sense?
Uh-uh.
I can talk with you offline. I can talk with you.
But what is budgeted is three and a half.
Yes.
Across the board.
But what I want to be.
And includes everyone, because not everyone is going to get.
Three and a half.
The maximum, but.
Correct.
You have to budget for that, project for that.
I do. And I think that's an important statement.
Yes.
That not everybody will get a three and a half. But we budget three and a half because we assume, let's say, for example, a meets gets a three, and maybe an exceeds gets a four. So you're going to have some that will get less than three and a half, maybe a three, and then some that will, the, the select few exceeds may get a four, and the average will be three and a half. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, yeah.
But we're covered in that amount?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
Okay. My, my other concern is with DOT and other departments, a 40% vacancy rate, police, sheriff, whoever. I have a, I have a little heartburn to approve 142 new positions before the vacancies are, are filled. And I'm hoping that with the pay and class being implemented and, you know, to, to all departments and everybody, new hires coming in to fill those vacancies will be at a much more competitive and higher rate. I think we need to make sure those are filled and before we approve so many new positions. And I know some of these I'm okay with because they're critical and have been, you know, they've been bleeding for a long time, not just county departments, but courts and other constitutional officers as well. So I, I'd like to take a longer look at the sheet with all the new positions and maybe prioritize those. Once the vacancies are filled, maybe they could come back for additional positions that may take care of the issues they're having if the vacancies are filled. But I think we need to concentrate on the retention and, and filling the vacancies. And I'm hoping that the pay and class will, will help us with that.
Commissioner, so we spent days in budget meetings with the departments. And what you'll see from this list of proposed positions, it's not in vacancy heavy type positions. Probably with the exception of the road maintenance crew, that's probably the only exception to that. Most of these, I use police as an example. We know where their vacancies are primarily in the officers. That's not what they're requesting. These are specialty positions. So that was one of the conversations that county manager had with each department of kind of, hey, we're going to prioritize you filling your vacancies with class and pay. But where are your critical needs outside of your vacancies? Or if it is a position you're highly vacant at, you have to fill those first. And I don't want to put words in Dr. Morris's mouth, but that was my kind of takeaway of those meetings.
Yes. So I shared with the board in the chair that I would take the, the lead on having courageous conversations with each of those departments. And I believe I met with over 30 departments. We made it very clear that these are critical positions. They have spent an enormous amount of time, Commissioner, going through their list and scrubbing their list. An, an enormous amount of time. They worked so well with me. They came to me having already done the work. There is no additional scrubbing. So what you would be saying to them, if you asked them to go back and cut more, is to do your job continuously without the resources you need to do it. That's not fair to them. Let me just say this. The positions, Bill is right, that are new are not the same positions that are vacant. We have been through this process numerous times and said, you will fill your vacancies first, but we're not adding the same positions that you're asking for over here. So for example, I'll pick on Michael because he has a wonderful sense of humor. Michael, if you have 25 vacant positions in, in the, in the maintenance department, and you can't fill those, I'm not going to give you 25 more in maintenance when you can't fill those. So Michael and I had conversations around that and said, what do you think you can fill with pay and class? You are right, it will help to get those positions filled. Michael would not come and ask for the creation of those positions or funding for new positions when I can look and see that he still hasn't filled the ones that are vacant now. So I asked that the board would trust me and this team to continuously monitor, engage what, what you have asked us to, to be good stewards of, and that's taxpayer dollars. We are doing that. But to ask them to come back and do it again? No. They have done everything that you all have asked them to do.
Well, the only thing I would ask of Michael, not picking on you, is I know he has a position for an events coordinator, for all the events, to schedule things and, but, and that's a full-time position. When, in the off season or when there's not a lot going on, what else would that person do? I mean, if they're just there for that, I mean.
Commissioner?
The crews are the.
There is no off season.
Things need is my understanding.
There is no off season in Cobb.
Okay.
There, there really isn't. There's, it's parks, recreation and cultural affairs. So it's not just the mowing or the Little League and all of that. They have events year round. There are events that you ask of them to prepare for, as I mentioned before, groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings and community events. There is plenty of work for that events coordinator to do. I just want you to know, they are the most conservative, your departments are the most conservative to the point that they don't even want to ask you for the very basic things that they need. They work on Saturdays.
I know.
They come on Sundays.
Okay. This, on here, it's three positions, operating capital and three positions.
Yes.
So it's not just one.
Exactly. It is, we are trying to create.
But would that be a whole department?
Yeah. What I, what I was about to say is we're trying to create a, a unit or a division that's called special events. So that when events come up, and they are always coming up, Michael has a, a ready set team that he can readily utilize. If it's so specialized or so big, then we could go out and we'll outsource that. But for the most part, just to keep up with the county events and not have a special events team for a county of this size, I honestly don't know how, how they do it.
Parks always. Parks always get called on for everything.
Always.
I know.
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate you, Michael. Okay, so, the other, and this has already been addressed, I guess, with the Board of Health and. DFACS are state agencies. So can we get a breakdown of what the state contributes, what the county contributes, and for the Health Department, what Douglas County?
I do have that for the Board of Health, I'll request it for DFACS. So I will send you Board of Health after the meeting.
Okay.
And, and in addition to the revised presentation that they provided, revised request presentation.
Okay. And then, no offense, Madam Chair, but I can't support the disparity study either. When I, my first year in office, I formed a committee called Keep It In Cobb. And from that committee, we worked with purchasing and the ordinance was changed, the purchasing ordinance, to give additional points for professional service contracts to Cobb-based businesses. And sometimes, if they met all the other requirements, you know, their points for pricing and other requirements. But a lot of times, that put them over the top to get that contract because they were Cobb-based business. And we changed the ordinance, we did seminars with purchasing of how to do business with Cobb, and they walked them through how to register and be an approved vendor so that they could make these, you know, bid on these contracts. And I had, we, I got reports of the number of Cobb-based businesses that were awarded the contracts each year. And in DOT alone, it was 60%. So, I wouldn't be opposed to looking at having purchasing maybe break down the bids that have been awarded in the last couple of years to see which of those were minority-owned, female-owned, or veteran-owned.
That's part of the study. That's exactly what they do.
But you can pull that report right now from purchasing?
They do it, but it's extensive. And in fact, I've been working closely with Roger with respect to this, and he's the one that shared with me how robust of a process this is and that a disparity study would be needed in order to create any type of metric around it.
Well, I think it, we could get those numbers from purchasing right now.
I'm sure he loved it. I'm sure he'd love to talk to you about it.
Okay. I'm, I'm just kind of saying what I think is needed or, or not. So, thank you, Bill, and I look forward to the breakdowns that we asked for.
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And just a follow-up, you're going to provide us information on the merit? Or is that something to be considered at a later time when you'll come back?
That is, we are using the budget at three and a half percent, and I think we'll bring a, I think County Manager will bring a plan back of what the new process will look like.
Okay.
So budgetarily, if, if approved, we'll be in a good place. And then obviously, performance evaluations will be done end of the year, and then merit would be contemplated in March.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Several of my questions have been answered throughout your presentation and also in your response to the Commissioners. But just taking a few minutes to thank you for all of your hard work, the County Manager, the department heads. This has been certainly a lengthy process, and you guys have done your due diligence, and I appreciate it. And I also appreciate the departments going back and revisiting their lists, their asks. And I think it's quite remarkable to start out at 515 and reduce that down to 148. And even more remarkable that the goal is to fill vacancies before we add additional hires. So I, I, I appreciate your leadership, Dr. Jackie, in getting this done. But the two follow-up questions I have, one is based on the merit increase. And if we have new hires before March, would they also benefit from that merit increase or would they have to be in place by a certain date, by January 1? How would that work if the new hire is, is brought on before, before March?
So I believe they have to be in place by a certain date. I will check with our HR team and get you what that date looks like. But yes, I believe there is some cutoff to that. So like if you had somebody, I believe, and I believe this to be the case, and the County Manager's nodding with me, so it makes me feel a little bit better, kind of stepping outside of my realm here, but if, I believe if you're hired March 1, I would not think you'd be eligible for the merit, but we'll confirm and get to you that information from HR.
Okay. And with the personnel amendments, you mentioned that there were full-time and part-time positions listed here?
Yes, so you'll see three columns on your spreadsheet, and you'll see the, from, going from right to left, you'll, from the far right, you'll see reclassifications.
Yep.
And then the second column from the right, you'll see PT costs. That's our part-time, and then full-time is next to it.
Okay, so the items that are filled in, the blanks, that's the number of, that would reflect the number of?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is the cost for each of those, whether it's a full-time, part-time, or reclass. We want to give you the breakdown. I wanted to keep them in that way so you could see it kind of by department and by agency.
Okay. And let me just double-check my list, but you pretty much answered everything else, but let me just. Okay, you answered that. Okay, that, that, that's all I have.
And can I just follow up one quick thing with Commissioner Garmo, because I, I don't like mistakes, I want to make sure I get it corrected for any future presentations. Page nine. Okay. So, the column in the blue box?
I sent it to you in an email.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so 3.6 minus 2.4 is not 1.8, it's 1.188. You left off the 1.
That, so, I, what I want you to look at is CSSD 1 is the top one, so you see that 1.2 in 23, that's your 1.88.
Okay, so then what's this hotel motel tax?
That is the county-wide 8% hotel motel, out of fund, out of the county-wide hotel motel. So don't, don't confuse hotel motel county-wide with the $3 room night within the district. So the 1.8 is the 8% hotel motel tax that is collected county-wide. The 1.2 at the very top is the $3 room night, the 3.6 million. So the col, so look at the blue box on the right, you'll see the 2.4, which is the Galleria's portion, and then right below that, the remaining 1.89 would be what's available for debt service, which is the 1.2 on the top right.
So why didn't we have any adopted in 2022?
We didn't have enough due to the pandemic, hotel motel collections crashed so hard, we only had enough to cover the performing arts center bonds. So we adopted zero of the hotel motel taxes to go towards, to fund stadium debt. We had, in 2022, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done. And so what had, had it been in previous years?
The high, we were just over 3 million was our peak for hotel motel county-wide that went to fund stadium debt. That was our absolute high, was just north of 3. We, and I can give you the history of kind of where that's gone, but the highest 3, I think we were at 2.7 the year before. And then with, with the pandemic, those collections just fell off a cliff, and there was not funds available to do it. It was just enough to cover, cover the performing arts center bonds. And I believe we were able to do maybe a couple hundred thousand at the end of the year, but it was very minimal. They're just simply the revenue was not there.
Okay, thank you for that correction, Buddy.
Yes, he's, he's keeping me honest.
Oh, he, he read my email, so.
Thank you. Chairwoman, any, any other questions or comments?
Were you about to say something? Go ahead.
I did, there was something that came up, I wanted to make sure. I see Director Kreider is in the office, perhaps he can comment on this, but it was a comment around compression impact of the 17, $17 an hour compression on the stepping grade?
That does not impact the stepping grade at all. Our pay in class compression at $17 an hour has nothing to do with the compression with stepping grade.
Right.
Just for clarification.
I just wanted to get the clarification because it was brought up.
Well, and the reason why I brought that up, because I believe for entering our, our police or firefighter 1 comes in now like at 16:32, I think it is, Randy. So that's where my comment is derived from, is, is our entry for?
Our, our entry level firefighter and police officer is $22.11 an hour. What you may be getting information from is based on a 56-hour work week for a firefighter. If you calculate, there's 46,000 based on a 56-hour work week, then yes, it is below $17, but they come in at a 40-hour week. And we convert a 56-hour employee, for instance, a firefighter gets 12 hours versus eight hours for a 40-hour employee on whatever leave it is. So we, we, we calculate it based on a 56-hour week, but they come in based on a 40-hour week, $46,000 a year, 22.11 an hour. So it won't affect public safety, so we're.
Thank you, Randy. Are there any other questions?
Bill, thank you. We're not done yet, but we've come a very long way to get here today. And that's not just to you, but it's again, to all of our staff that have been with us throughout the years, that have worked with us, helped to provide excellent service at a time where we have not always been responsive with how we've addressed our workforce. And, you know, for every challenge, there's a silver lining, and that pandemic has been a challenge for us, but it also has been a silver lining because it has changed how we view work and how we value people who come to work. And we want to make sure that all of our employees are valued because that's how we get value to our citizens. If we don't value those who are providing the services, we are not providing the value to our citizens for their investment in our county through their tax dollars. So I'm very pleased at how we got here today. I know that, again, we'll, we'll hear from the public, but I feel like we can stand tall, knowing that we've been responsive to the years of concerns and the culmination of that over the past year in the pandemic, to make sure that we are providing adequate resources to be able to operate this county and to operate it well. With that, thank you so much, Bill. Thank you, Buddy. Thank you to other members of your team who've helped. Thank you, County Manager. Thank you to all of the leaders who are here today, and look forward to us working together over the next month to make sure that we get a solid budget pass for our organization. Thank you.
Thank you.